If you could, can I lean against that chair and stay there? Although I guess we have it here. I don't know. Okay, fine. Because we need to have you talking at the mic.
Yeah.
That's all right. Just leave it. We've got this. There you go. I don't know. Just leave it there. That's fine. Perfect. All right. I withdraw my request. Just leave it, Ray.
Yeah, no big deal. We got it right here.
Comes the cavalry.
Great. Thank you very much. It doesn't want to work, does it?
Let me...
I'm at a meeting. Call me later. I'm at a meeting. Call me later.
He's very important.
Okay, sorry.
All right, go.
I'm all set. Am I on speaker?
Yep.
Okay, good. I can do the best I can do, which is each square has been scaled down to represent a tent site. So in the middle of the diagram, you'll see, I believe, between the seven circles on the end to the right-hand side, and I suppose that would be 18 squares. These all represent tent sites, okay? There is really no distinction between the squares and the circles. He just chose to do two different, two different styles, okay? What I wanted to let you guys know is out in front here, the circles with the X's in front of...
Yes, we see them.
Yep. They represent trees, okay? He wants to put those there. He's recommending putting those there as a buffer. The way I'd like to proceed with this is this. The house, that's the farmhouse, and the barn that's connected to it, I'm going to keep as a buffer between the road and the campsite.
So that's a change from last time when you said you were going to take them down?
Yeah, because I really said it on the fly, and when I thought about it later on, I realized I misspoke, so I wanted to clarify that tonight before we really got started. The reason for that is, is because initially, if I get my approvals, there's going to be no reason to worry about that in the beginning. Obviously, if that changes, I'll come back before the town, and I'll go through all the necessary steps to make sure I have my permits in order, present how there's still going to be a buffer remaining between the road and the campground, because obviously, I realize that's a requirement. It won't be as simple as me coming in and just asking for a permit to demo the house and the barn, because obviously, if that happens, now all of a sudden, people can drive by and see the campground. So I'll also be coming in to make provisions to let everybody know that there's going to be a fence either before the house and the barn get demoed, or simultaneously, okay? Okay. Is that point well understood?
I'm happy if everyone else is happy.
Okay. I'll wait for comments then, before I proceed.
I have a couple of questions, but I'm not sure it's related to this.
Well, if nobody has questions about what I just said, I'm ready.
Okay.
Do you have your state road entrance for the road you're going to put over on the line?
On the left-hand side, Darryl? Yes. Do I have the permit? No, that's all being...
So my question is, from experience, what makes you think the state may not make you enter from the road you already have?
I do, I cannot answer that. Going into this initially, I said to Jim, shouldn't we have two access roads? And the reason I said that to Jim was because, just as a common sense guy, if any, if there was ever an obstruction on the one entrance, and an ambulance had to get in or out, or a fire truck had to get in or out, he immediately chimed in and said to me, yeah, I think that would be required. So we started discussing where the secondary access road should be, and we both agreed to the far left would make the most sense.
But that wouldn't be an in and out anyway, but that's not really what I'm getting at. The state may say, these are too close together, and you can't have that one. You have to bring your entrance in through the entrance you already have. That's why I was wondering if you'd already talked to the state.
Nope. He's in the process of submitting that permit, that access permit for that road permit for that access. He never told me there may be an issue about an offset, like you're proposing...
You have to have a permit to enter the road there.
What's that?
You have to have a permit to enter the road.
I understand that. I do. And he's working on all those permits, as we speak. They're doing that, okay?
I'm not saying they're not going to give it to you. I'm just saying...
Yeah, no. Listen, you always have to have a plan B and D. If all of a sudden, the state came back and said, XYZ, the only way you can have it is by putting it on the other side of the property, on the right-hand side, then obviously, we'd have to come up with a new drawing, resubmit it to the state, and that would have to be passed and, you know, completed before obviously, anything could be...
Well, one of our conditions, if and when we finally get to the voting on this, would be that all state permits were acquired before any development could begin. So...
Of course.
That's sort of a given.
Oh, that's a given. That's totally understood by both me and Jim. Right now, he's banking on it, and he's done a lot of work on this left-hand side boundary line, that that's where it's going to be, is where he proposed it. That's why he designed the public bathroom, if you will, up on the top corner of that access road, just to your right-hand side. There's a little bit larger square box. It made sense to us to put the public bathrooms there, because whether you're coming in, or you're coming out, convenience-wise, if you need to, if you needed to jump off right there and use the facilities before you either left or you were just coming in, it seemed perfect. And then obviously, about midway in on the site, there's another public bathroom as well. It says future shower house bathroom. Again, it's a little bit larger square. That's why, so far, up till now, without hearing yea or nay on the actual access road, that's why it's been designed this way.
And where's your office going to be?
The, hopefully, the farmhouse in the beginning, and possibly, if that comes down, I was thinking the mobile home. At some point, at a future later date, it could evolve into potentially being in the mobile home. But for right now, the office is going to be in the farmhouse.
The mobile home on the other property?
Yeah, but I probably shouldn't even open my mouth. When I left here, I had a lot of hard things to figure out and think about and think all the way through, because a lot of things were just being fired to me all at once. And I said to myself, it's been pointed out tonight, a couple of different occasions, we need to have an office, we need to know where it is. And I said, you know, instead of worrying about taking down the farmhouse and the barn right now, leave it up as a buffer, so that you don't have that immediate problem of being able to see it from the road, which that gentleman that was here, that seemed to be a very big concern. I understand it. And I said it could also double as an office, with little, with little work. So that's, that's what my idea was, Darryl, was to keep the farmhouse and the barn, not only as a buffer, but to utilize it in the beginning stage of this for an office. It seemed perfect.
And what are the hours you're going to stay open? What are your hours?
Whatever's allowable, whatever's allowable. I don't even know what those hours are, but I'm not going to be...
So you're not going to be a 24-hour person?
No, I'm going to, I'm going to be conforming to... Somebody made a suggestion the last time I left here in the parking lot, that I reach out to some of the other local campsites. But a lot of them are closed for the season, so I'm kind of in between being able to make contact with certain people, but it's a fantastic idea. I don't want to go against the grain. I want to go with the grain. So if everybody in the areas, let's just say, eight in the morning to eight at night, that's going to be the...
Well, you have to be reasonable. If people are going out for dinner, or going out for the movies, they need to get back to their tent site. I mean, you know, let's be real here.
No, I, no, I was, I thought I was responding to Darryl as far as the...
As the office is concerned.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misinterpreted.
No, 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 that's okay. I was responding to Darryl as far as what would the office hours be? I would find out from the other campsites. You don't really want to, you don't really want to be more accommodating than others, because that could be a little bit edgy to people that have already been established. So I would, I would just follow the norm. I wouldn't be trying to go against the grain, so to speak. If everybody else thought eight to eight was what they did, and, you know, that's what I would do.
To me, the more concerned, if I can follow up with Darryl, would be that, you know, your office hours can be eight to eight, as far as I'm concerned. But I know one of the concerns that was expressed was for safety reasons. Would, is, like, right now, I believe there's people living in the farmhouse?
There is.
And so they would, obviously, they sleep there, et cetera. If they were to move down to the mobile home, that would be the same. So if there were an emergency of some sort, or if there was excess noise at some point, they would be available, even though the office might be closed at eight o'clock. They would be there to address whatever disturbance or other situation that might occur.
The way you're describing it right now, Joyce, is exactly the way we've been discussing this, as well as somebody also possibly residing in the cowboy apartment, which last time I was here, Darryl had asked me specifically...
The cowboy?
I call it cowboy apartment. In the big cattle barn, there's a cowboy apartment. There's a rental. Luke, who's here right now...
Hi.
He's in the house. And he has a friend, a close friend, like a family friend for years and years, who has an interest in me succeeding and becoming part of this. We were discussing if Luke was to move down into the mobile home, he's a little bit away, but as an intermediary person, living, residing in the cowboy apartment, with his hand a little bit closer to the pulse, so if all of a sudden, he needed to call Luke, he'd be, he'd be essentially a camper, because if he was to walk outside of his little apartment of the cattle barn, you know, it's right there.
Yeah, I hear you.
So the layout of it, for me, being a landlord, a lifetime career landlord, it screams layers of insurance that if there's something going on that shouldn't be, it's not like you're in Florida waiting for a check, okay? Which a lot of landlords do. That's not going to work. That's not a recipe for success. That's a recipe for failure. Okay? Go ahead.
Yeah, the mobile home you're talking about, is that on the former Chick property?
Yes, it is.
It is. Okay, so is it shown on here? It kind of looks like the Chick house there.
You know, yes, it is. And I think he included that, I think he included that just because. I'm not, I seen it today. I could tell that he was kind of in a rush. I got to his office in, or at his Sebagel Technics, maybe, maybe half an hour before they were trying to get out of there for the day. He furnished me with all this stuff. I seen he added that, and I just left it alone.
The mobile home isn't on here.
It doesn't look like the mobile home's there.
No, it's not there.
What is this structure to the farm?
That's the chick, that's the house.
That's the old Chick place.
Is that the house that got torn down? Oh, I don't even know why that's there, then. I really don't.
Is the, is the mobile home...
A little bit to the right-hand side of that, Joyce.
To the right-hand side of what?
Yeah. My other question along with it is, I'm looking at this plan here, and unless I'm reading it wrong, you'll follow that Secocas Ave down to the river road there. It looks like, looks like that jogs out. Where is it? But over here, it says Ralph Chickland to the right. So, see what I'm saying? So, see what I'm saying? Right here, but over here.
Yeah, I, I see that, yeah.
So my question is, is, is that-
Well, this is part of the Chick, see, it goes this way and down, and then back here.
Oh, all right, okay.
And this is all Chickland over here.
Okay, gotcha. All right, that, that was primarily it. Now, the, the last question is, is you've got this one bathroom up there in the car, one facility.
Yeah, Robert.
But, these, uh, tent sites cover a heck of an area. Gotta be, what, close to a thousand feet down through there, right?
Okay. And you're thinking that, what, it's too far away?
Well, my question is, that's a, that's a hike for somebody down here in one of those round ones, it's gonna, you know, it-
Okay, I can't, I can't walk away because of the speaker, but I wanna show you something right here if I can. You're referring to this one right here, right?
Yeah, that's the old one.
There's, there's also another, no, there's also another one right here. I pointed that out.
That's his proposed future. So another, you're not gonna build that right away, it says here, right?
You have one up by the-
This one says future shower house and bathroom. I guess my question would be, I think you need it.
Take out the word "future."
Absolutely, I think that's just a play on words, honestly.
Take out the word "future," and it's-
I, I don't know why, I don't know why he put "future." Both bathhouses have to be constructed before the tent sites can be rented. Okay? And I can, and I can make a note of that to him, to clarify that, 'cause I can see why somebody would read that and think, all right, I guess that's phase two, no, it's not.
At some point, you'll build another one, but boy, that's a hike for, you know.
The reason-
Old guy that has to go quickly.
I'll tell you what's gonna happen, is they won't make the hike.
Rob, Robert, for some reason, he wrote shower, shower house bathroom, and for, over here, for some reason, he put "future." I have no idea why. It makes, he knows and I know that they're both being constructed at the same time, because the ones on the end here, that are well past the one in the middle, you're absolutely right. You watch people sprinting. No, no, I promise you that that's, no.
They're gonna find the nearest bush and tree.
No, that's a mistake. There's no five-gallon buckets being supplied to the tents, I promise.
Okay, so, any other questions?
Oh, come on, just let me-
We talked about, we, it would be better for everybody, and also, I think it would be good for him if we did a sidewalk.
I agree, I was gonna bring that up, 'cause you brought it up to me, yeah.
Listen, the last time you guys brought it up, nobody thought that that was necessary, but I'm all for it.
Yeah, I think it would help you, 'cause it would-
Make you further along now.
That's fine, okay.
Um, correct me if I'm wrong. We, Donna, did we accept the application, the original?
No.
We have not even accepted the application.
No.
Okay. But we had a-
See, I understand that Darryl needed more comprehensive-
But-
For every-
We held a public hearing, without even accepting the application. I know, but without even accepting the application. Normally, we have the public hearing-
I never thought of that.
After we accept the application. I, I, I-
We need to vote.
We, we, we haven't voted on the plan,
Right.
but I, I would've thought, and I'd have to go back and look at the minutes, because my memory's not as strong as it should be, I would've thought we accepted the application, and then set up the public hearing two weeks from that time. That's our normal procedure.
I'll read to you what it says in the minutes.
Would you please?
Yes, it says, Chair Foley asked the board if they wanted to vote to accept the application tonight. Members wanted to see a full plot plan that shows parking, property lines, and any other information the board needs to make the decision to accept the application. Jim Seymour said he will prepare a comprehensive plot plan, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, okay, so we did-
And it's gonna be voted on tonight. That's what it says right here.
I could not remember that. Thank you, Grace. So, then my next question is, um, well, first of all, obviously, we're, we're gonna accept the application, does that mean we have to do another public hearing?
A what?
Another public hearing? Why would we do another public hearing? I don't see any reason for that.
I don't see a reason where we already have one.
Okay. Alrighty, I just wanted to get-
I mean, I think it would be better if somebody, I mean, there's people that don't want this, okay?
All right, Darryl.
Yeah, if I, I got a pretty good idea where it's gonna go, but I think if they got a feel for how steep that hill is,
Yeah.
that, you know, that that is out of sight there, and-
Yeah, it's a lot, there's a lot of topography there.
So, how about this? How about if tonight, we accept the application, which we have to accept, because if we don't, we're always gonna time here.
I was gonna say-
And establish a sidewalk.
Okay.
For ten, establish a sidewalk tonight. I believe that we, they, all of those people have gotten their notices, and, uh, to me, it's a waste of time to have the same people come in and say the same thing over and over again.
Yeah.
So since we've had the public hearing, we'll do the sidewalk, and then when we meet the first weekend, uh, the first Monday in December, we can, we're back to our normal routine of, of either voting for or against, and if it's for, with conditions. Does that make sense to anybody?
Yes, totally.
It does. I do have one question.
Sure, now's the time.
Prior to the acceptance, do we need, or is this for Craig to worry about, um, a design? I noticed you've done a good job of just about everything you can think of regarding the site.
A wastewater design?
But there's no, um, bathroom, shower design, um, septic design.
Septic system, yeah.
You know, is that something that we need to worry about, or is that something that Craig will-
Normally, normally, on a plan, they show where the septic systems are going to be now.
And, and it does, it shows it.
Well, it shows the bathhouse in the, in the-
I'm, I'm a hundred percent sure, Robert, that if, that if I need to ask, uh, Jim in the morning to email it over.
I mean, he was pretty specific, he designed it for sixteen hundred and twenty gallons a day, etc. So, I mean, I, you know, I'm sure it exists.
No, they have it all done.
Right.
Yeah, and I could have him forward that over. I don't know if he was afraid of just how much-
You know, I guess my question, is that a, a board thing, or is that a Craig thing?
Well, I think-
They have the design done for that bed?
Yeah, absolutely, it's done.
Normally, we get all that information when this is submitted, you get the whole nine yards of stuff.
Okay, and that's not a problem to ask him to forward that over. And just as a follow-up to what Darryl was just saying, he's actually, he actually told me in the office today, that he's ready to move forward with all the permitting with the state, essentially now. So he said he's, he's gonna need me to do a form for him, as well as that I did for you. He, he talked to me today about that.
A form?
Uh, because he's ready to submit. So he's gonna need a couple of things from my daughter.
Oh, well, the same-
So that when he officially submits it to the state, he's got all his Ts crossed and all his Is dotted. So I know for a fact that anything concerning this plan, and I, I do mean anything, whether it's septic or whatever, if you guys give me a list tonight, you'll have it in the morning. You know, give or take by the end of the afternoon.
Well, we don't, we won't be meeting again until the first Monday.
Okay, but, well, Craig will have access to it, and I don't know, I mean-
Craig should have it.
No, that-
You know, he, he- Yeah, well, yeah, but he, he would be the one-
Yeah, it would go to Craig.
Yeah, and if he has it, you all have it, right? I mean-
You know, and spot anything that needed.
Yeah, for sure.
That was my only question, I don't know.
That's okay. Any other questions?
I just got one.
Sure.
Yes, Pete.
The, uh, when the people come in,
Yep.
they're gonna unload, how are they gonna get their, their baggage from the parking area to their tent?
There's, Pete, when you look at the middle entranceway, the middle entranceway, just, just, uh, a little bit up, just past the, um, farmhouse, you're gonna see a parking off to the side right here.
Yes, I've seen that.
Right here.
Right.
Yes.
They're gonna, they're gonna park there, they're gonna grab their duffel bag, and if you see, they, they pick up the trail right here. If they're coming over to left, they could probably take the access road or this trail.
Otherwise, they're gonna walk to the tent site.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right now, I'm gonna keep it simple, and I'm gonna have them walk to their tent site. That's it.
I mean, if you're a tentor, you're used to doing a fair amount of-
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I, when you see what we're gonna do, and you see the way it's gonna present itself, I don't think you're gonna be able to get out of the car fast enough to go to your destination. That's how, that's what I plan on, you know, designing and plan on offering. That's, I mean, if I was showing up, I, I think of it like this. I go to June's Farm in West Sand Lake, New York. I can't wait to get out of my car and grab my bag and go to my destination. I don't care if I'm walking up a trail, and then it's part of the, it's part of the experience. Yeah, if I wanted luxury and this and that and everything, I wouldn't be going to June's Farms. And that's, you know, that's it.
So you're planning on using both the existing and the new one as entrances and exits?
Yes, I do, Darryl. I, I feel like the place, as big as it is, as large as it, as it is, has to, it just makes sense to me, there has to be two access roads. What happens if somebody pulls in and their car breaks down? But at the same time, you get an emergency call that somebody's having chest pain? That doesn't make sense. They have to be able to come in and out. There has to be more than one access road. The common sense screams-
I'm not sure the state will let you do that, but-
You'll, you can find out from the state.
Yes, and like I said, he's ready to submit those permits for everything that you've seen developed here, now. Whether it's gonna be tomorrow or, or by Friday, I can, I can pinpoint that tomorrow and relay that information to Craig.
Don't pressure him to do tomorrow, because that won't make any-
No, no, I'm saying-
By the time we meet on, uh, the fir-, I believe it's December second.
Okay, but I would just naturally ask him, you know, could you, could you supply this information to Craig, so they, they have a better grip on what's going on?
One of the things we want to do, is, has been brought up to me, that Darryl brought up, we need to walk through the pathway down to the beach, so we can have it in our mind. Uh, 'cause some people know the property, like, I don't know the property, other than what I drive by.
Okay, no problem.
So, I don't know how the rest of them feel, but, uh, that would be part of the sidewalk.
Okay.
So, the next thing is, any other questions?
Can I ask you guys something quick? Are you guys sure that you wanna do the walk? Or would you rather I provide transportation, like an SUV? I'm just, uh, the reason I'm asking is because I'm fifty-seven. Some people don't, are not, you know, running around like they're spring chickens. So I'm saying, if somebody wants me to arrange an SUV, I will do that, so that they're comfortable.
You mean to drive through the field down to the beach?
Exactly. Whatever the route's gonna be, and I probably would have to get ahold of Jim.
Well, the purpose of a sidewalk is to walk the site.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken.
It, no, and I-
What do you think?
A mile?
Well, it's less than a mile, but it's quite a ways.
It is quite a ways, I'm not sure if it's any benefit to us walking down to the beach.
Grace, I'll be honest with you.
Well, maybe you just wanna see where the-
I'll be honest with you, I wouldn't wanna walk it.
Okay.
You know, and I'm, and I'm being honest. Darryl, you'll probably do it with a fifty-pound back on, pack on your chil-
Yeah, but, wait a minute, one of the things that was brought up was, where is this path going to be?
Yep.
Wha- what kind of signage, precautionary signage is there going to be? What's the drop-off from the land to the beach? I mean, that, I thought that was part of-
The buffer at the river?
Well, it is, but this is where the tent sites and stuff are. You'll see all of that just by going down to this lower section. You get the feel for the whole-
So, so show me, if you will, please, on your map there, where the path leading to the beach would, is, or part of it exists, or going to be, or whatever.
There's a couple different, there's a couple different possibilities, and Jim and I have to pin that down.
Okay.
But I will tell you one thing, I heard you say something, it's important. There is no drop-off.
Oh, okay.
The way, if you were to come, if you were to come along that left-hand side boundary line where that access road is, there's a natural, I call it a wagon way. It leads to that backfield, okay, the, the large backfield.
Now I am totally disoriented, guys, because I thought the beach area was going to be down in the, what? South corner, the lower corner down there, not up there. No, well, where's, is, isn't this the river?
Yes, that is the river.
So you're gonna use the working road that the chicks had to go down to the field and take care of it?
That's one option. That's one option. And I don't know, because I haven't navigated that versus coming down this access road, coming back, accessing the field in the back, and taking a sharp right-hand turn, which I've done before myself, and walked right to the area that Rachel Chick had told me that I could always use if I wanted to. There's no drop-off, it's very even.
Okay, well, all right, so-
Is there signage and stuff? No. Is there going to be? Yes, of course.
Well, it says something along the top of the bank, so, um-
Oh, yeah, you know why it says that? Because all the river frontage that I own right now, Joyce,
Yeah.
is a steep drop-off. Every, every one of the-
Well, that's what I was-
No. Behind the farmhouse. If you, if you were to, just look at the farmhouse from the road.
Yeah.
My far left to my far right, twelve hundred feet on the river frontage, it's all steep and banked, man.
Okay.
But if you're in that backfield and you're walking along that-
Which is what the old Chick property was, the back field, is that what you're talking about?
No, no.
He's gonna have to show me, so I see.
Show us on your map, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I, I don't get it.
So here's the deal. Let's say, let's say that this is the far-left boundary.
Yes.
And let's just say, this is the far-right boundary.
Correct.
The twelve hundred feet of river frontage that I presently own,
Oh, you, okay, that's-
It's all steep, it's all steep decline.
Yes.
Nobody's accessing that.
Okay.
But, if you were to come down this way, because there's a natural path to this backfield, and I've done this several times, and I take a right-hand turn, and I walk through this field, and I walk through the trail, whether it's an old Stoneville Trail or Four Wheel Trail, whatever.
So sort of where the, the slash dotted line, the slash line is? Yeah, where you're finishing?
Yes. And you walk, just as, no transition, it's just smooth. You walk right into the, 'cause Rachel always said to me, if you ever feel like you wanna access the, the part of the beach, you know, blah, 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 she'd go right in and feel free, for me. So I would walk down, and it was like nothing. There was no bank, there was no drop-off, there was nothing. It was beautiful.
So point to me from that, where you would enter the beach, walking, what you're just pointing out to me.
Okay, so just past my boundary line here,
Yes.
almost exactly, the, the, uh, the line of the beach starts changing.
Okay.
And right here, right here in this corner,
Yes.
is where you could start accessing the beach, and then twenty-six hundred feet past that is beautiful, pristine beach.
Okay, so you don't own that beautiful, pristine beach?
Yes.
He does know.
He does know.
You do now that you bought the Chick, like-
I just, I just, well, I'm moving over speak, I just bought it.
Okay.
I'm controlling, I, I wanna be clear.
All right, yeah, I understand.
No, no, I, I wanna make sure I'm clear. I own twenty-three hundred feet of the twenty-six hundred feet, and I'm in the process right now of closing on the remaining three hundred feet on the farthest part away from six ninety-seven, okay?
Okay.
From another owner, from the third owner?
What's that? From, from the chicks. So, you guys know, you, Darryl.
Oh, yeah, oh, okay.
You guys know that was subdivided. You guys know that was subdivided. The piece in the middle has twenty-three hundred feet of road frontage with tw- give or take twenty-seven plus or minus acres in the barn. The piece on the far, far right-hand side, I have under contract. I have a deposit on it. I have a closing date scheduled. But I just wanted to be clear and not misrepresent anything. The last three hundred feet of that twenty-six hundred river frontage, uh, beach frontage, rather, I do not own right now. I do the twenty-three hundred feet. So, twelve hundred feet is-
So you bought the farm, but you haven't bought the mobile home yet?
Correct.
It's in process.
Yep, correct.
All right.
So there's twelve-hundred feet that's not navigable, there's twenty-three hundred feet that is, and there's a remaining three hundred feet that will be. But what the beautiful thing about this acquisition is this is, you get to the beach frontage, say you want to go fishing. Well, now you can walk down the twelve-hundred feet that I've always owned and controlled with six ninety-seven, and you can go fishing and be far enough away from anybody enjoying that twenty-three now, eventually twenty-six hundred feet of beach frontage.
I gotcha.
So there's something for everybody.
Yep, this clarifies it in my mind, too, okay?
This helped us. I, I went back to the original picture you gave us.
Thank you. Yep, and if you want me to bring that up here and be a little bit more specific for everybody, I can do that.
No, no, it's fine.
No, this helped. I, I did this along with this.
It's funny how, it's funny how when the twelve-hundred feet ends and the twenty-six hundred feet starts, it's a completely different, it is a complete, it goes from bank to beach.
Well, you can, you can see it.
Well, I had, I had said to those guys, I said, well, do I have any beach frontage whatsoever? And they said, no, not even a foot. It just was like mind-boggling.
A whole river's like that, it changes everywhere.
Yeah, but I just couldn't believe a twelve-hundred-foot run and a twenty-six hundred-foot run didn't overlap at all. They're like, no, the post is right there. I'm like, that's crazy. My luck.
Alrighty, so-
No beach frontage for me.
It's really nothing to the board, but are you gonna advertise this beach along, you know, that this beach is available, or?
The whole reason I bought the farm next door, Darryl, the only reason I bought the farm next door, is because the project at six ninety-seven had a ceiling with no beach, right? I felt like buying the Chick Farm, it increased the potential for six ninety-seven ten X.
But this is only to be available for your campers, or are you going to open it to the public?
Well, what I'm saying is-
No.
Is that what you're saying?
If you advertise this, there's a possibility, it's nothing to us. You may need a permit from the Saco River Corridor.
And I, and I've talked to both Craig about that on a few separate occasions, feeling like I had a little bit of time to get my arms wrapped around that, while I'm trying to buy the farm next door, while I'm trying to get Jim to get you guys what you guys need, you know what I mean? There's a lot going on.
Darryl, I, I don't understand why they'd have to do Saco River Corridor if they're just gonna walk down-
It's nothing to watch anyway, I'm just saying that later on, and they, and they have to, the corridor will find them.
I, I mean, just to walk to the beach?
Joyce, if he's gonna advertise this, he's making it part of the camping area, isn't he?
Plus, I want to, plus, plus, I want, I want to put it down.
It's nothing to us.
I want to have a dock there. Okay, I want to have a dock there. So I already definitely talked to you.
Yeah, then you would go there, okay, yeah.
Yeah, and it's something I want to approach the people that control that corridor and include them in what I'm doing, and rather than they hear it through the grapevine, well, wait a minute, who's this guy think he is? No, 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 no. I'm gonna approach these folks, give them a, give them a, a, a broad view of exactly what I'm doing, make sure I'm not stepping on anybody's toes. If there's anything I'm supposed to fill out or pay for, please let me know. That's the way I've always found it best, okay?
Okay, so I, I think, does any, any more questions, Craig? Any questions?
I'd like to sum up my question.
Sure.
Go ahead, Pete. Go ahead, Pistol Pete.
It's a, uh, I like the layout, it's an ambitious plan, but I'm sure the, uh, as you develop it, you're gonna make changes along the way, and the, I guess the, just the bill inspector's the one can probably guide you through it.
A thousand, a thousand percent.
I think your customer's almost gonna tell you what it is.
Yeah.
It's gonna have to be so.
If you were to ask Craig the conversation I gave him tonight, it was exactly that. I said, Craig, I said Pete had already made a, a comment when he looked at the, when he looked at the concept, it looks like a bunch of noise to me. You had said that. I took that to heart. I appreciated you being honest, all right? I said, Craig, can you imagine if we put every garbage can, every burn pit, every light, every fire extinguisher? I said, it's not reasonable. I said, it's gonna be up to you, once we start this project, to tell us the ordinances, the rules, the regulations. Everything's gonna have to be spot-on, seven inches for the stair, anything over two stairs, there's a railing. I'm, I'm very familiar with this concept, but I can't say no every single rule, but I want to learn them. And I don't want anybody renting something that's not safe. He's not gonna allow me to, to, to pass off to a customer, the end user, anything that's not by the book for the town, because ultimately, we're all, you know, ultimately, everybody's got a stake and libel, and guys, I told you in the very beginning, this is when I started, I am a person that gives somebody more than what they're requiring. I've always found it served me well. So whatever it is that you require, I'm gonna give you more.
But the state requirements, you gotta follow anywhere.
Whether it's state requirements, it's town ordinances, it's town regulations, it's town rules, it's code enforcement rules, I'm, I'm kind of familiar, and I know that I have to adhere to all of it. Right? I mean, that's, Craig's never gonna let me, you know, nor do I want to, so.
Pete, did you have another?
I think the majority of the people that are interested in this training area that I talk to are interested in making sure there's enough people that are running it so it's disciplined, you know, so that there's not a big circus going on down there.
I want to-
It has all the markings of it.
I want to say a couple things to that, to that comment. I caught the last time I was here exactly where your feeling was on this, especially with the people that you spoke to. I'm gonna have an open invitation to anybody from the town, especially the naysayers. I love proving people wrong. I'm going to invite them in as if they're family. I'd like them to take part in the festivities and come be part of something that I originally came into this town, fell in love with it and decided I wanted to do. The people that showed up, Claudette, uh, the gentleman, I'm sorry, Ross, and his wife, Susan.
I forget her name.
Okay, those three are on my target list to find out where they live, put something in her mailbox, reach out to them. I can't stand it when somebody doesn't want to give me a chance, and I always pride myself in proving them wrong. Until he shakes my hand and says, this is completely different than what I was thinking. Thank you so much, I'm, I'm so happy, blah, 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 I won't be satisfied. I don't want somebody driving by saying, I told you this. No, that's not gonna happen. But you have to give somebody a chance in order for them to prove what they're gonna do.
Right.
Okay, that's all, that's all.
We, we never said we didn't trust you. The old saying, trust but verify?
Oh my God, a thousand percent, but when you, when I was here last time and you had said something, well, everybody I talked to thinks you're gonna be running it like this, that, and the other thing, and I, all I said to myself at that point is, you have to just give me a little bit of a chance. If you give me a little bit of a chance, I'll invite all those people that were saying all those things, I'll treat them to breakfast. If we're gonna, you know, if we're gonna do something, we'll all sit down, tell me what might still be a concern that you have, so that people in the community think that this is an asset and not something that's pulling the community down.
I think they pretty much expressed their concerns at the public hearing, and now,
And then some.
And now I think it's a point of moving forward however it's going to move forward and seeing how it works. I mean, that, that, the people are going to have to have some faith in whatever, as long as the boundaries are set.
Yeah.
And, and whatever.
I guarantee you, my boundaries are gonna be much stricter than what you're gonna ask me to do. I guarantee it.
Pete had a question.
Yep, yes, Pete.
Well, the, uh, the only thing I have is as much as you get an operation, I'd like a, a trip down there to see what it looks like.
We will, sure.
You mean the steep?
No, no, to see it.
The whole site.
To see it. So, so back to my original question. Do you guys want me to arrange a SUV so that everybody can get in it, go together? Maybe we explore the route down that access road through the field to check it out? Then maybe we come back out and we look at, and we check out that service road that goes through the Chick Farm to go down to the beach site and come back. I'm willing to do whatever it takes to make sure that people are comfortable.
Is that what you want, guys?
And then maybe we all kind of decide which route we think is better.
I'm more interested in knowing what I'm talking about, where these tent sites are gonna be, because that's why the question is, that I get, is-
He has faced them purposely.
Will they be marked if we like go on this sidewalk? Will they be marked?
I could get ahold of him and tell him that you would like to do that, but I will be honest with you, the grass is tall.
Yeah.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of-
About marking the, could they mark the parking area? That would give you a feel for the rest of it.
I think that's reasonable. I think we could, I think we could mark out the parking area, because like Darryl was pointing out, that kind of encompasses where the actual tent sites start. I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, we could do that, that's enough.
I don't think there's, I don't think there's any problem with us getting four, six, eight stakes because it's got a concave to it. I think if we, I think if we mark this out, I think that kind of gives us a really good starting point, but I will point this out to you right now. Just past the parking, that, that funny configuration right here. This, this right here is wetland. And this, this part in the middle is raised. I asked him today what that represented, he says it's raised. So this right here represents wet. Everything around the parking other than this wet area, and he's trying to look into that, because I pointed out to him, that's the area that the house, the basement, um, discharged, has been going for years, and I feel that that's more than likely the reason it's wet. He says he has to look, what's that? He says he has to look into that. So for right now, I'm gonna ask him as a favor to me, to help me, uh, mark out the parking, and I'm, I'm gonna ask him to help me mark out, as crude as we may have to, this wetland area, so that'll let you guys know.
That's good, but you don't have to mark every space, just the area of, of the parking lot, yeah.
And then when we're there, we can kind of look at how it-
Right.
Okay, and let's face it, if I can drive by and I can see to the left of the house to a tent site, or I can see in between the house and the cattle barn, a tent site, I know something has to be done. Either greenery or fence. I understand that from the road, nobody should have to drive by and see somebody who's got a T-shirt leaning over the top of their tent drying. I get it, I understand that. Aesthetics.
So would we park at the farmhouse to do the sidewalk?
Grace, right here, right here is the farmhouse?
Yep.
Right here is the next, access road in.
So right there, we drive in there?
Right there, or when you come in the second access road, and you come in this way.
Okay.
The access road is there.
So there, that is there?
No, it's not there.
I mean, for the site, for the sidewalk, wherever you want.
For the sidewalk, where do we meet you?
For the sidewalk, we drive there. Where, where is a good place for us to put our cars? That's okay.
When you pull into farm, you'll have parking everywhere.
Okay.
You'll have, you'll have a ton of parking.
So just pull in the farm.
And I don't, we don't care if you pull on the grass, we don't care if you pull in the driveway. There's tons, there's tons of parking.
Okay.
The big cattle barn, you gotta park right on the grass there. It's flat, it's hard.
Okay.
If you get stuck, we'll tow you out. It's not a big deal.
So the next thing is to establish a date for the sidewalk.
Okay.
Are you around?
Yeah, I mean, listen, it's gotta be before the second of December, correct?
Right, it does.
Okay, so let me get on Jim's office. I'm gonna try to bug his office more, I'm gonna try to bug Jim right now. I'm very sympathetic to what he's going through with his wife. I'll call Dylan tomorrow. I officially met him a couple times and specifically today more so. I'll get ahold of Dylan tomorrow and ask him, what do I have to do to get a, a guy to get out on the side? Help me stake-
Because you don't have to be there, there has to be someone who knows it that can show us.
No, this is-
You don't have to drive up from New York.
No, that's okay. This is gonna, this is very important to me. I've got a lot invested in this. I'm gonna meet the guy, be his right-hand man, carry the sticks, do the pounding, I've done it a hundred times. We will give you the parking area, we will give you the wetland area, and then I think the rest is kind of self-explanatory because it's the plateau that goes down, okay?
All right, now we just have to pick a day.
Pick a day.
Well, I have to talk to those guys.
Oh, you're gonna talk to them.
If it's okay, I'll tell you what, tentatively speaking right now, Joyce, what day do you folks think that would work for you?
Saturday, the twenty-third.
You don't like to do Saturdays.
I don't like Saturdays.
Saturdays, no.
No.
Whatever day you guys come up with is gonna be good for me.
How about, how about- How about Friday at like three, this Friday?
Oh, that, Grace, I, I love you being a pusher like that. I'm a pusher, too. I don't think it's reasonable for me to ask that office to do that.
Okay.
I know they're busy pushing projects right now. I just don't see that happening. How about next Friday?
The Friday after Thanksgiving?
The day after Thanksgiving?
No.
No, that's not good.
No, that's not, I just realized I have an obligation that I cannot get out of.
It's Black Friday, you gotta get shopping, you know?
Oh, I'm gonna be shopping for something, all right?
The twenty-sixth is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, two days before.
If, if you guys think that that Tuesday could work with you, I just realized, too, we've got Thanksgiving coming up.
We got all kinds of stuff.
It's gonna be a big ask from Sebago Technics, but you know what? I know they're gonna do it.
No, we don't do it then, we're gonna run into December 2nd.
No, I agree. Tuesday, how about tentatively right now? How about tentatively-
Let's all get together here.
Yeah, how about-
So Tuesday?
Tentatively right-
Tuesday's-
How about tentatively right now, Tuesday at three o'clock?
Tuesday, the twenty-sixth at three o'clock.
Tuesday at three o'clock.
Is that going to-
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to make sure that Jim's office can get that done. We've got men. If one guy goes out and he can tell us, put one there, we'll be fine. So the twenty-sixth, tentatively right now at three o'clock.
Well, we're not gonna need more than an hour to do this, we're not gonna need-
No, especially if you take me up on my offer and I get-
A car?
Yeah.
A vehicle.
You know, like a three-seat, a three-seat vehicle.
So we went at three?
I, I guess, that's what I got.
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth.
I like that date, I think it's reasonable. I think I can make it happen.
And if it turns out that it can't be done, you can let Craig know and he can let us know.
Of course, I'm not gonna leave anybody hanging. He's gonna know tomorrow either way. Because somebody from Jim's office is, is either gonna give me a yes or a no. The only problem I can kind of see is that Thanksgiving's two days later, but I don't know if they'll say, I don't, I think they're gonna get it done for me. We've got a lot riding on this.
Well, we've got a lot of if's, we can handle if's.
Okay.
We're big people.
I'll get back to you tomorrow, Craig, regardless of yea or nay, okay?
Okay, now I think the next thing we need to do, uh, before we go any further, uh, is to vote to accept the application.
That's a good idea.
We can't go any further without that.
Make a motion to accept the application.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Bob seconded it. All those in favor? Okay, so our next move is the site plan, then on December 2nd,
Okay.
we will, um, be here at seven o'clock.
Okay.
December 2nd?
Yeah, that's a Monday. It's the first Monday of December. We meet the first and third Mondays.
Yeah.
Uh, it may not be here.
Okay, all right, um, that's okay. Um, Victoria couldn't be here tonight. Uh, so at seven o'clock, we will meet and we will vote on the plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
And-
All I, all I ask-
And be prepared with whatever conditions you think you might, and if you want to submit something in writing for conditions.
How soon do you think I could get that? And the reason I ask is so I could get them on it, you know, Sebago Technics.
No, no, um, traditionally, if you have it to us that day, uh, uh, you know, well, how is it gonna differ from this?
I always like to give it to you before if I can.
Well, I, I like to have the board see it before, but not ninety-nine percent of the time, that doesn't happen. So, we will be voting on the plan, we will have whatever conditions are required within the ordinance, whatever, take, uh, issues that were brought up perhaps at the public hearing.
Okay.
Everybody will have their idea for condition and we'll talk about them.
Okay.
And, and, and-
One more question, which I get from a couple of different people. Uh, this will be run so that it's not gonna look like a homeless camp, right? That's what I get, that's what I-
Darryl, I'm gonna say this to you right now in front of everybody on, on the notes, on record. You are gonna come to me at some point, you're gonna look to shake my hand, and you're gonna say you proved me wrong.
I, I'll be happy to say that.
And I, and I, the reason I'm challenging you right now is because I take it that you're that kind of guy. If you're proven wrong, you will say, you know what? I was wrong.
No, I'm not saying you are, I'm saying that's what I get.
No, you. I know, and I'm saying this to you, at some point, I'm gonna hunt you down like a dog.
Okay.
I'm gonna have you come over.
I'm not far away.
I'm gonna come, I'm gonna have you come over there, and I'm gonna put you on the spot, and I'm gonna say, is this what you thought it was gonna be, or have you been proven wrong?
And I'll shake your hand and thank you.
Or have you been proven wrong, sir, and I'm gonna put you on the spot, and then we're gonna go to breakfast, okay? You have my word on that.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
You've been my biggest challenge the whole time, and honestly, you're the guy that's kept me invested in coming back here every single time, because I can't stand it when somebody's wrong but they don't know it. I'm serious. You've been the driving force behind this for me, so thank you.
Alrighty, anything else? Guess not. Thank you for coming, appreciate it.
Thanks for taking your time again, guys.
We will see you on the, um-
Well, we'll see you-
Donna?
Is this for Donna?
Twenty-six.
No, 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 no. No, Donna, Donna.
Donna, let it go. You're as wild as they get. Grace, help her, will you?
I will.
Oh my Lord, have a talk with her.
I, I will. I'll explain it to you on the way home.
What are you talking about?
Let it go.
Okay.
No, no, you're wrong.
No.
I'm not saying anything.
Um, okay.
Karen?
Alright.
We all set?
Okay.
I'm gonna make sure I leave with what I should have.
Yeah, make sure you, do you have a plan like that, Craig? Or do you need a...
I have a big one like that.
And I gave you guys, there's one for the plan.
Oh, is it right there?
Yep.
That will go in Donna's office.
This is luxury. You open it up, you can mark on it, you know, so that's...
That goes to Donna.
He has the same copy for him in his office, and I'm leaving with the only other copy. And if you ever need something else, if you call me, let me know. I'll just, I'll just ask Jim this.
No, as long as Donna has this.
Jim's ridiculous account. The Sebaggo Technics is really, really good.
They are professional, for sure, yeah. Okay.
Michael, thank you.
Alrighty. Alright, we'll move on now to the minutes of our last meeting.
You're welcome.
Robert, thank you. Pete, enjoy, enjoy the visit. Hope you like bourbon.
I do.
Have you ever heard of Booker? Have you ever heard of, have you ever heard of Booker's? Okay, so Jim Beam has a nephew. His name is Booker Nell. He makes a file called Booker's. If you ever have an opportunity, try it. You'll talk to me about it later. No, you will. You'll bring it up to me.
This is on, on the camera, you know?
Well, now everybody knows.
Okay, good night. Thank you. Alright, um, I don't see the corrections you made in...
You don't see them?
In yellow here, no.
That's cause I already made them. I just wanted to show you where the sections are.
Well, I, I, um, I went through them anyway, so my, my corrections are this.
Okay.
On the first page, uh, the last paragraph that begins with Jim Seymour.
Yeah.
The third, um, line down, remove the word "of."
Yep. That's what I had.
I can't hear him pushing the chair.
Remove the word "of."
Well, we'll wait till Craig goes in his office and stops pushing the chair so we can hear.
It's bad for people that are deaf.
Okay. Third, the last paragraph, third line down.
Yeah.
Remove the word "of."
I don't have a word "of."
Utilize. I thought I caught all of those.
Okay.
You missed a few.
I guess so.
Now, these may conflict with your yellow ones, but this is...
No, this is, I didn't catch it this afternoon when I read.
Alright, so on page 2, fourth paragraph down that begins with campers.
Yeah.
Uh, put a period after the word "tent." And then the next sentence would just...
You mean campers would not bring an RV or their own tent?
Period, yes.
I got a period there.
Oh, it's a comma on mine.
Oh, I, that's an area I fixed this afternoon.
Well, anyway, this is what it should be.
Yeah, I got it.
Then, then the next sentence will read, "Sites are seasonal only," so you remove with no kitchens or bathrooms. Uh, same page, next to the last paragraph, beginning with Russ, is his name Russ or Ross?
Ross.
Ross.
Ross, so it's...
Oh, I renamed it.
It's Ross Bartlett, so those should be corrected wherever he is.
It said Ross here, but it said Ross here.
Yeah, I have Ross all over the place here.
And it's Ross?
Ross. You put Ross in the initial minutes?
So then you put Ross. Alright, so, um, that second paragraph up from the bottom.
Yeah.
Um, the second sentence, because of the routiness up there, he wants assurances about who will police this campground.
About who?
Instead of that who, it should be about who.
About who will police this ga- campground to control noise, comma, et cetera, comma, and wanted to know the maximum number of, and, and so take out "and Ross Bartlett," and just put a, a comma after et cetera, and wanted to know maximum number of campers per site. I personally don't see how he can stick to two adults and two children, but that's just my opinion. So the next page, top line, um, the word, two words in the first sentence, "to be" should be removed. Ross Bartlett, S-A-R-O-S, came again to the microphone to talk about the municipal sludge.
Used as fertilizer.
Used as fertilizer for the former farmers, yeah, so take out "to be."
Yeah.
Um, okay. Next paragraph down, um...
That's not a true statement what he said anyway.
Yeah.
That pile was, that pile was across the street, not on.
Should I put that in the minutes?
No, we only put in what was in the minutes, is what was said. Take out on the second line, uh, instead of repeating Ray Marshall all the time, it should begin, "He said the farmhouse barn in Three Bay Open Shit..."
That's on the second paragraph?
Yes, on the last pa- uh, on the third page, second paragraph down, second sentence. First sentence that says Jake Smith came forward?
Yeah.
Alright, and then, and then you start the next paragraph with Ray Marshall. We've got his name in here 900 times. "I would remove Ray Marshall. He said the farmhouse barn in Three Bay Open Shed will be torn down."
He took that back, though.
Yeah, he did.
Today.
But that was today.
He took it back that night. Cause I asked him if he put it in the, on the print, and he said he wouldn't do that. Put it in the application.
Oh.
Said he wouldn't do that.
But at the minutes, he said he was going to tear them down.
At the meeting, he said he would.
At this point, at this point, yes.
No, at the meeting, he said that he would. And then I said, well, you put that on the app, I think I said, would he put it on this? And he said, no, he wouldn't, which means you weren't gonna tie him down to tear that place down.
He's exactly right. He wouldn't commit to it.
He wouldn't commit to it.
So what do we do with that sentence?
Just leave it.
Well, that's what he said.
That's what he said, yeah, okay, yeah, okay. That's what I thought. Alright, and then down at the very bottom of the page, under "other", um, put "Select Board" at the town, in other words, the FOIA, uh, Freedom of Access Act, and sign a form to, to, "to be." Take out "to sense," sign a form to be sent back to the Select Board at the Town Hall. I mean, it's just grammar, that's all. And other than that, I had no other changes.
You've got some, Bob?
I do. The problem is the paper that I print out prints a different font, so my page number and yours don't submerge with me here. One is, um, it would be on your page 2, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 down.
Sixth paragraph?
Starting with Ross Bartlett, next asked about ownership of the property. And it said, "Ray Marshall said it is owned by his daughter, and he just closed on the property next door." I think we, we should probably get a little more specific for the minutes.
We keep finding more out about that at the meeting too.
Yeah, that's true.
He made out like he had bought it all, and then he only bought one part of it.
So try out this and see if it works for you. Uh, Ross Bartlett asked about ownership of the property. Uh, Ray Marshall, we could put, say, "he," or Mr. Marshall if you want. Said the parcel known as the Tiedemann Farm.
Don't go so fast. I understand I've spelled Tiedemann wrong too.
Well, you'll have to look that up, cause I can't help you there.
It's E-M-A-N. I looked it up this afternoon.
Okay.
Known as the Tiedemann Farm.
Is owned by his daughter. Period.
Yeah.
And stop there, right?
That's it. Stop there, period. And then...
Whoops.
He just closed on the property next door, known, formerly known as the Chick Farm.
Yeah, that's a good, a good point.
And that is titled in his name. That way we know where the titles are, which piece is which.
You want that in there?
Yes. It should be. Somebody, wouldn't it, don't you think? Although, was that said?
He did say it.
Yeah.
What's that?
He did say it at the meeting.
Well, I think it's important we clarify what parcel we're talking about here, and who owns what.
Yeah.
So, and that was, that was an issue that reared its ugly head shortly after that. I mean, we had to go and get this letter and what have you, so... I'm not done yet.
That is?
No.
Nope. Uh, the last piece I've got here is on the next to the last page. Uh, 1, 2, starts with Chair Foley asked the Board, down near the bottom.
Yeah.
Asked the Board, uh, said the Board is meeting on Monday, November 18th, and it was agreed, and then it gets kinda muddy. So it was agreed that Mr. Marshall and Mr. Seymour would come to the meeting with a plot plan showing more details.
The only, the only detail he added was the four trees.
Really?
Yeah. There's no more here than they were before.
Lot of dimensions around there this time, though.
What dimensions?
The, uh...
I don't see any dimensions.
That is, Bob?
I think that's it, Donna.
Okay.
Okay, before we get to that, let's, uh, any more corrections for the minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve this amended?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Bob, is there a second?
Bob.
And Pete's seconded.
Pete's second.
All those in favor? Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Now what was the next thing?
Well, you know, I, I don't believe... Maybe, I don't know.
That should go to Donna in the records.
Oh, this is the one.
I was just gonna ask.
Yeah, but I don't think he, he had the, the, uh...
He may not have had that.
I don't think he had the, the, you know, feet and bounds on it.
He didn't have the what?
Boundaries?
He didn't have the...
On the last one.
The dimensions here, he, uh, this is so many feet, so many feet, the first time, he just said, "Here it is."
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I kinda wanted to see one of the tent sites describe how big it's supposed to be.
Yeah, you know, the other thing they did...
He doesn't wanna do that.
Wasn't that somewhere, uh, isn't, didn't I read somewhere, either in the state law or in our ordinance?
It's in our ordinance how big it has to be.
That they have to be a certain size.
5,000 feet.
Well, no, each tent site, each side.
Each site has to be so big.
Has to be so big.
Yeah, it's 5,000 feet. It's in the ordinance.
Is it 5 or 3,300?
No, no, I think 5.
I think it was.
I'd have to look back, but it is in the ordinance.
I know it's in the ordinance. I said that, yeah.
But he doesn't show that.
That's what I mean. That's one of the things I thought he was gonna show.
To me, this, I don't understand.
I think with what he's got for sites, it brings it down to 33,000, I think, 3,100. There's two different ways of figuring it, according to how many in shoreline and how many is not in shoreline.
Yeah, uh, well, none of them are in shoreline, are they?
No, they're not. That's why he can have more in a smaller lot.
Yeah. Well, I have to go back.
He can have 14 lots per acre, because he's not in shoreline. And if you divi- if you divide that into 14, that brings it down to 30, 3,100, I think.
Well, you know, you...
I think it figures out.
I don't know whether I'm being too picky, but, but to me, when we have asked for a plot plan and, you know...
He didn't add anything to this.
What, what, what is, what am I not saying, or what are we not saying, when we ask for a plot plan? A plot plan is supposed to show exactly what, some of what we're talking about.
Right.
And, and it never has, and I don't understand. Have, has the law changed? We don't know about it? Am I asking for something that's unreasonable, or are we asking?
Yeah, it's probably a lot more expensive to do it.
Well, that doesn't make any difference. That's what the ordinance says.
I did, I think we specifically said we wanted to see one of the dimensions in the, in the site.
If I remember correctly, we did say that, and Seymour said it should be done.
That's what I thought. I just don't, I don't get it.
The sidewalk, but I don't think the state's gonna allow him to commit in two places.
That's his issue, not ours. The only, the thing that we will say is that he's got to get all his state permits.
He might. He's got a good view of both ways, but usually a business, they don't like him to have two entrances, you know?
Uh, but I kinda get the fact that, you know, for safety, it is better to have...
Right.
Actually, they would, with cars coming, both of them, it really wouldn't be a safe. There'd be traffic. I mean, that's how they try to, try to do it.
Have one be an egress and one be an entrance?
Yeah, that could work for him if he wants, but I don't see...
State parks got one way in, one way out. How's that up to it? Even the state parks only have one entrance.
Right.
But, but it's wide enough to accommodate a two-lane traffic kind of thing.
You know, coming and going.
Yeah.
But there's a distance, and there's a lot to it, uh, that he'll have to go with the state, but I've seen the state refuse an entrance, and then three weeks later, we're almost doing the same exact thing, and they say, okay. So, that's...
Yeah, well...
But they tried to change everything when Aaron did this down here, to get him to put in, uh, what would they be, borders or...
Well, that never went through the, um, conditional use permit process because of Norm. He just let him do it.
No, but he did talk to the state on that, because...
I don't care whether he talked to state. He didn't come through the, through the...
No, I know that, but the state agreed with him that because of how tight the area was down there, it was safer not to have those things in there than it was to put him in there.
Yeah.
People would be back. They did with Franz. They were backing up. That one got taken out.
Yeah.
So, but technically, when Franz did that, they only wanted him to have one way in and one way out.
That makes sense down there, cause that is a zoo.
I believe he got a hold of his representative, and they worked with the highway department to wing it down, because they were gonna put him all the way down that road.